Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So picking up from our last town meeting, a hall meeting if I've got some slides here, I thought it would be appropriate to provide a few glimpses into the activities of our speaker over the last several months. In April, she welcomed Dean Allard, dean of the Brooklyn Law School, and later that month, she hosted the Chief Justice of the United States, John Roberts, at Rensselaer. Okay, with due deference to Dean Allard, maybe one really prominent legal expert. In May, she hosted our 211th commencement and the 2017 Presidential Colloquy. In September, there was a wonderful event at MIT titled "An Evening with Shirley Anne Jackson," sponsored by the National Science and Technology Metals Foundation. In October, she was joined in this theater by four of our prominent alumni as she hosted and moderated a panel on "impact on global challenges." In June, she gave two significant keynotes. First, at Fermilab, they celebrated their 50th anniversary and had her join them. At Western Digital, she delivered an address to the top 500 engineers and scientists at a conference which was themed "Into the Edge." Dr. Jackson is seen here with one of our newest board members, Dr. Seva Ram, who received his PhD from Rensselaer in 1986. In June, she was recognized with a 2017 Drum Major for Justice Award by the American Association for Access, Equity, and Diversity, or AAAED. Let me read you a little bit about this award. This is "special acknowledgment of the extraordinary contributions that an individual, including a public servant or one who has held an elective office or employment to public service, has made to the cause of equity, access, and diversity." In October, she was recognized with a 2017 Alexis de Toiville Award, given by the United Way of the Greater Capital Region. This is their highest recognition, given for her leadership and the leadership giving of Dr. Jackson and her husband, Dr. Morris Washington. Also in October, she was recognized by the Board of Regents of the Smithsonian Institution, which conferred on her the title "Regent Emerita," part of the citation reads "with deep gratitude for the outstanding service that she provided and will continue to provide to the Board of Regents and the Smithsonian Institution." So it is my privilege to ask all of you to join me in welcoming to the podium our 18th president, in her 18th year at Rensselaer, the Honorable Dr. Shirley Anne Jackson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And thank all of you for being here. I actually thought that what I will do this afternoon is to actually dispense with a formal presentation, and instead, I'm going to show you a video that we use to introduce our Capitol campaign, and then tell you a little bit more about that campaign and what we're doing as we're launching it. And then I would like to respond to any and all questions that people have about any and all things. But let me introduce some members of the leadership team. Of course, you just have seen John Kolb, our CIO and Vice President for Information Services and Technology; Vice President for Human Resources, Curtis Powell; General Counsel and Secretary --
[laughter]
-- and Secretary of the Institute, Craig Cook; Vice President for Administration, Claude Rounds; Ah, we have a popularity contest going on. Our Dean of Engineering, Chaker Garday; The guy you better applaud next, our Vice President for Institute Advancement, Greg Eastman; Vice President for Student Life, interim, Lenorman Stone; Dean of Science, Kurt Brenneman; Vice President for Strategic Communications and External Relations, Richie Hunter; Vice Provost and Dean of Graduate Education, Stan Dunn; Associate Vice President and Director of Athletics, Lee McElroy; Dean of the Lally School of Management, Tom Begley; Director of our Technology Park and Eve, James Spencer; Vice President for Research, John Dordick; CFO and Vice President for Finance, Jenny Gray; Our Assistant Vice President and Dean of Students, Travis Apgar; Director of the Center for Materials, Devices, and Integrated Systems, Robert Hall; And our Director of Public Safety, Jerry Matthews. And I'm sure there are others out there in the audience, including my own husband, Morris Washington. Thank you for that. So I thought I would want to talk with you a little bit about the Capitol campaign this afternoon, but first, let us tee up a video, so you can see how we introduced the campaign to the larger world. Thank you.
This is what transformation looks like.
A growing portfolio of top-ranked programs. A steady climb in the national rankings.
Quadruple the number of applicants. Triple the research volume.
And we're just getting started.
The goal of Transformative: The Campaign for Global Change is to further establish Rensselaer as one of the world's essential institutions.
A crucible where the talent and ideas we need to tackle 21st-century challenges are forged, and we're pursuing that goal from a position of strength.
Our student body has never been larger, more talented, or more diverse.
Our faculty has never been more productive, more interdisciplinary, or more recognized.
Our campus has never had a greater capacity for boundary-breaking research and teaching.
Universities are inherently about the future. We educate the next generations of leaders, of great citizens, we hope and intend. Our faculty make discoveries and innovate those things that will build that future. And a technological university, one with the history and legacy of Rensselaer, is a unique place, because it has always had an outlook to impact how we live.
The world needs Rensselaer energy.
Rensselaer ideas.
Rensselaer innovation. The Transformative Campaign is our response to that need.
The three pillars of the campaign are about student support, about faculty support, and about expanding and building out and equipping our campus for its next century.
Campaign investment in scholarships and financial aid will narrow the gap between our students' ability to pay and the scholarships we are able to provide.
Campaign investment in endowed professorships will strengthen our ability to attract and retain the dedicated teachers our students deserve and the forward-thinking researchers the world needs.
Campaign investment in our campus will enhance the effectiveness of our teaching, increase the productivity of our research, and make the Rensselaer community even more dynamic.
Rensselaer sees the challenges of the next century as being the global ones that affect humankind. We are uniquely positioned to address challenges and seize opportunities, because everything Rensselaer does is structured around those challenges and opportunities. We have reshaped our curriculum to address the challenges. We target our research along those lines, and we educate our students to address them. And so this is in our DNA, and this is how we live.
Rensselaer exists to produce the talented people and groundbreaking ideas the world is always needed.
It is the reason we were founded, and it is the reason why we are here today, asking you to join us as we look to the future.
Your participation in Transformative: The Campaign for Global Change will make an immediate and tangible difference for one of the nation's leading universities, for our students, and for the world.
Someone helped us to get to where we are. Someone enabled the education, the world-class education, that allowed us to make a difference in the world. Now we have the opportunity to help the next generations of students, students who in their way are just as motivated, just as eager, just as capable, and they know the challenges that we face. They see opportunity in those challenges. They're eager, they're bright, they need our support. You give to what matters, and you give at the level you can. And so that is how one has a transformative campaign, and that is how one has a campaign to be transformative in the world. So as you've heard, the campaign is based on three pillars. One is called "bridging the gap." It's to raise money to increase our endowment for financial aid, to be able to better bridge the gap between student need and our ability to cover that need. And that is going to be for undergraduate scholarships and graduate fellowships. The second is focused on the faculty, to enhance our ability to attract and retain the best faculty and to grow the faculty by creating more endowed chairs and new constellations. And the third has to do with the campus, that we've been growing both in size of student body and in the activities that we do and support. And so there's a need to expand our facilities with the new, with expanding what we have, and with upgrading and repurposing what we have, and looking to strengthen our technological underpinnings, those things that allow us to operate as well as those things that support our education and research. And so that's what the campaign is built around, that will play out into going after and garnering support for specific endowed chairs, for example, and defining new constellations, as I mentioned. And to that end, I've been doing a listening tour, where I set out to visit every department in every school before the end of the calendar year. And it turns out that I actually have visited all but two departments in every school at Rensselaer. And to find out how they see themselves positioned, what they really feel they want to be known for, how to leverage what their strengths already are, and how to play into the institute-wide highest priorities as well. And then to identify gaps, gaps when it comes to academic talent, and gaps relative to facilities and technologies that are needed to support what they do. But to then draw from that how we create that in a way that can be support the most we can across a broad front, and what facilities need to be shared, and what ones are unique to a given area. And so that's what, in fact, I just met with two departments today, biomedical engineering and material science and engineering. But as I've said, I've visited all but two of them. I still have chemical and biological engineering to visit, and industrial and systems engineering, ISE. And so that's it. So let me respond to questions that any of you may have, and the mic is open, as it Yes, please.
Thank you. So I know one of the pillars of the new Capitol campaign is to bring Rensselaer into the third century, our campus, and frankly, I'm very excited about the new Science Center. I think that's long overdue, and I think that's going to be a great addition, and this is coming from someone who graduated in biochemistry, so I was in JRL a lot. That said, I think a lot of parts of campus are still struggling to be in the second century, and I think ECAV doesn't really need expanding when parts of campus are missing air conditioning, or more importantly, accessibility access.
Well, I think, number one, whenever we do any major renovations and upgrades, we do provide handicap accessibility. Secondly, you know, I personally walk around the campus to look for where there are opportunities to strengthen handicap accessibility. Third, we recently have made changes to our website for those who are vision impaired. So that's a big focus of ours. Secondly, while we do not have the perfect campus, you know, there's been a huge change from when I came here, and we continue on that march. And so we've been on a program, which I'm going to ask Claude Rounds to speak to, where we've systematically tried to get to classrooms and upgrade them, and to undergraduate labs, particularly in engineering and science, and we have done a number of those. And the final comment I would make is that as we are launching the arch, we actually are going and renovating a number of the un-air-conditioned rez halls to make them air-conditioned. But Claude?
I will repeat what Dr. Jackson just shared with you in terms of the plan associated with the summer arch, to increase air condition in resident halls and classrooms. And over the next few years, we'll be spending several million dollars doing that to have them ready for the summer arch. In terms of accessibility, in addition to the comments made by Dr. Jackson, we spend about $500,000 to $1 million annually addressing accessibility requirements. And it's certainly a challenge. The topography here on campus alone is a challenge. So we talk about the buildings and accessibility. The mobility issues around here is always a challenge, and we've invested in making ramps and more convenient ways for our handicap and mobility impaired students to use this campus. In our Capitol plan, we try to address all the important areas of the campus and the needs in those areas on an ongoing basis. So as we put together a Capitol plan each year, we address deferred maintenance projects, and we have a process for identifying the highest-risk deferred maintenance projects. And we've spent about $58 million under the Rensselaer plan on deferred maintenance, and that includes about $2 to $3 million a year in deferred maintenance work. In addition to that, in the classrooms, we've spent up to $16 million in classrooms. In the last two years and continuing into the future, we have increased the investment in the classrooms, the studios, and the teaching labs to accommodate the expansion and enrollment. And so we've been spending $2 to $3 million a year annually on classroom upgrades, and that's going to continue as part of our Capitol plan. We also, as most people know, we have a Rowan Plan whereby we invest in resident hall upgrade and Capitol renewal and upgrade in resident halls, and we spent about $3 million on resident hall upgrades. So our Capitol plan makes a very concerted effort to try to touch on some of the more challenging things in terms of the priorities of our programs and also our physical facilities.
Thank you. Next question?
If one of the pillars of the Capitol campaign is to bridge the gap of student need, why did Rensselaer forego participation in accepting the New York State Excelsior Scholarship, which aims to help the neediest of New York State students?
Well, it turns out that, you know, we looked at that, and there are a lot of, you know, interesting things about the Excelsior scholarships that most people don't understand. And that Excelsior scholarship actually comes on top of a lot of financial aid that students get from other, you know, federal and other sources, and we actually add aid to what our students get. And, you know, there were other requirements that were attached to that program that we felt would not be beneficial to Rensselaer as a whole. And so we decided that rather than do that, we would ourselves, as part of what the Capitol campaign is about, and over the years, and Jenny, you can correct me, we've added $20 to $25 million to our overall financial aid pool for our students. And so today, 95% of our students get some form of financial aid, and most of those are getting need-based aid from Rensselaer. Jenny, any comments you want to make?
No, I think you have outlined it. I think we are also concerned that there seems to be a swap nature who asked the question in this row, that there would be a swap out, so it might not be a net add for students. So from a -- it was confusing when the language first came out. So to the president's point, from a private university perspective, we thought it was better to grow our own resources and cover the aid.
And also, from the point of view of data from what was called KICU, the Council of Independent Colleges and Universities, it turns out that the private universities were giving more aid to students than the publics, it turns out. So, next question.
So I know something that a lot of people have been talking about recently and have concerns about is RPI's bond rating. In 2014, it fell to an A-, and then in 2017, it fell to triple B+. S&amp;P has specifically cited the institute's high debt burden and low available resources as the reason for this. What is RPI doing to improve its bond rating, and what in general is the plan going forward with that?
Well, I'll answer it in two ways, and then I'll turn to Jenny again. First of all, there's more than one bond rating, and the main bond rating that determines essentially what a borrowing cost, but we don't have any plans to borrow, is actually from Moody's, and with Moody's, we are in actual A credit. I think it's A3. And then S&amp;P changed the factors that it used, and, you know, I can let Jenny elaborate more in how they calculated the bond rating. It is true that Rensselaer has a fair amount of debt, but that debt occurs in two ways, and I think it's something people fully need to understand. The first is debt we've incurred to carry out the plan, and we did do a prior Capitol campaign, but that money flows in over time. And in fact, you know, we've spent over $1.3 billion to upgrade the campus to hire faculty to make any number of changes. And, but that being said, we borrowed for Rensselaer plan initiatives, for upgrades that needed to be made to the campus, and so on. But about $150-plus million of the debt relates to funding of a legacy defined benefit pension plan that a number of people depend upon. And prior to the time I came to Rensselaer, for a decade before I came, no payments were made into that plan. And altogether, before I came, a total of $11 million was put into that plan. Since I've been at Rensselaer, we have put over $215 million into that plan, and so certainly, we have borrowed for that. So if you subtract that from our actual debt, long-term debt, what's left is actually less than the endowment. So if we didn't have that additional debt, this probably would never have come up. Nonetheless, what we are on is a path to what we call the crossover, where there's a certain amount that the debt exceeded the endowment, and we have been on a path over two to three years to actually bring that to zero. That's what the crossover is, to have the long-term debt and the endowment cross each other. And last year, from last year to the end of the fiscal year, we actually have more than, we brought that down by more than half. And in fact, it's less than that today. And so we're well on the pathway to achieving that crossover. So, thank you for the question. Jenny, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
I think you really --
Other questions, please? Yes, please.
Afternoon, Dr. Jackson.
Afternoon.
I have a question about the campaign. First off, I think it's great that we're having a Capitol campaign to bring more resources for the students, the faculty, and everyone involved in the Rensselaer community. I think that's great that we're doing that. My question is about our progress towards that, because I want to make sure how we, as a community, are helping with this. You mentioned recently that we have gotten pretty close to $400 million pledged to the Capitol campaign. Would you happen to know, like, the timeline of that? Like, you're going from, starting from which time to when? Because when looking at gifts that the RPI has given through the municipal securities filings, from my math, it seems that it started in 2008. Is that accurate, or?
Well, I don't know the exact date. There are always reachbacks, even in the prior Capitol campaign that we launched, I believe in 2004. There were reachbacks all the way to in the '90s. And so I'll, you know, we'll find the exact date for you, but any university has that in terms of the quiet phase. But actually, quite a bit of money has been pledged and has come in just within the last year.
All right. And for these gifts that we're getting in, what is it counting exactly? Is it just counting straight to, like, say scholarships and funding, or is it also counting donations to, like, clubs? Like, if we get, like, a speaker or something donated, is that dollar amount counted?
Well, if something comes into the general treasury of the university and it's tagged as a gift, then it would be counted as a gift. So gifts that are gifts to the endowment, gifts that are so-called expendable gifts, gifts that are estate gifts, gifts that are multi-year pledges, all of these things count.
So like a class gift? Like if someone donated as an alumni to a class gift, would that count towards this?
Yes.
All right. And same with like a gift to a student club?
Well, I don't know. Jenny would have to answer that, but I think it would, does it count, Jenny?
No, I don't think a gift to a club would count, because that would go into an agency fund as a general response.
Sure, sure.
If it's a gift to the club.
Yes, Jenny?
I also wanted to make a comment also.
Jenny, I want you to use the microphone. Here it is.
Yeah.
I usually think I yell fairly loudly. For, there are differences in campaign counting and financial reporting. We do get life income funds, which for financial statement purposes, you discount. We also have had, and are starting to have success, with corporate grants. Those are counted appropriately in a campaign. They would be in contracts and grants in the financial statements. So while there's a trend, and certainly trends go up and down, because we get multi-year pledges to the endowment in one year, and then single-year pledges and gifts and cash gifts, you know, in the next year. But there are acceptable differences in what you count, so you can't really correlate back to the financial statements.
Right. Even I had some difficulty sometime in figuring out, you know, in terms of gift accounting versus what flows through the financial statements. So when people very assiduously study the financial statements, you may not get the full picture in terms of what's called case accounting, which is the Council for the Advancement and Support of Education.
Yeah, and it's appropriate.
Which lays out these criteria. And we adhere to those criteria.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Other? Please. Please.
Hello. Past town halls I've attended, there have been no security checks, like bag checks?
Yes.
What has changed that would require those now?
Very vile, focused, threatening emails that I've gotten because of the union issue. Other questions?
You mind if I go first? Sorry, you might be so close. This question is in reference to the Director of the Union job description and the content of the leaked memo from the Director of the Union Hiring Committee. As you know, the Director of the Union is funded by the students through a self-imposed tax.
It's funded by the university. Any money that is charged to matriculating students is money the university is charging them. That's the legal thing. So, and when they have their proposed fees, those fees are reviewed through the finance office, and so they go through a review and approval process, like the budgets for all other parts of the university. So I think it's very important that you understand that.
Thank you for the clarifying. Please don't interrupt. So, why do not, why do the students not have a say in the job description and the performance management tool of the Director of the Union position? And why aren't students formally involved in the process of the performance reviews?
Well, first of all, those things are patently false statements, and I'm going to let the Vice President for Human Resources explain what that means.
No, we have... I don't need questions.
Thank you.
First of all, you didn't give me a hand when I stood up, so I'm concerned about that. You know, this is like, the union issue is like a reality show, and I feel like I'm a part of it. And so, someone talked about the first time they came in here, that they had security. This is the first time I've been to a town hall meeting where people have written out questions, and they're probing and so forth and so on. But anyway, let me answer your question directly. We have the PU in here somewhere, and he can tell you firsthand that he's worked with me directly on the PMT, that's the job description for the union. And we've taken our comments, and we've included in the job description. We've had, we advertised this position on a national level. We had over 50 applicants. We met with the PU and GM, they've been involved in the process. We've trained individuals across the board to engage in the recruitment of a director. In fact, we had 10 really viable candidates. Because of the press behind this, we've lost eight candidates.
That's not true.
Eight candidates. And then, we have two additional candidates that we're going to bring to campus. Now, we've met with the E-Board, we met with E-Board, and those two candidates will be meeting with the E-Board next week to interview them. And then we hope to get the feedback from those individuals so we can move forward. And that's where we are.
Yes, you wanted to add something?
Would you want to, instead?
Yeah. All right, go ahead. So, I'd like to introduce myself quickly. My name's Brian. I'm actually on the Director of the Union Hiring Committee, the interview committee that we are going around. From my understanding of the whole process, we, as the committee, were only presented with two candidates at the beginning. So, I'm not disputing your statement about people dropping out about bad press, but I just want to state that they dropped out before the students were involved in the actual process. Is this a factual statement?
No, it's not.
Okay.
You finished with your question?
Um, no, I am not.
Okay, go ahead. What else do you have?
So, also, as part of the interview committee, I was amongst the people who reviewed the PMT. And it's my understanding that all the reviews that the students made were actually rejected. Can you comment on this?
That's not correct, and we have the PU right there can testify to that, that we met with him, and we made the corrections.
I can't corroborate the statement that Justin and I were able to meet with Vice President Powell and representatives from Human Resources, along with Dean Apgar, and we were able to review the PMT and suggest edits. Now, it is correct that not all of the edits that we suggested were accepted, however, a number of them were, and we have moved forward with that process.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes, please.
She's been waiting for a while.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. As Rensselaer is accepting more international students...
I can't, I can't hear you.
As the school is accepting more international students, does Rensselaer give any kind of form of scholarship or financial aid to international students? If not, why?
We don't give much financial aid to international undergraduate students, and part of that is because we don't get much support from international alums for that kind of financial aid. However, if you look at our graduate population, where approximately half more of our graduate students are international, all of them are supported in one way or another by the university, either through research grants of faculty, but in fact, most of them are supported on direct university resources.
Thank you. I have been working in the New York State government for the past 10 months, and I've come across two statutes which RPI is still delinquent on one, and recently rectified a delinquency on the other this, this past September. Sections 6431 of the Education Law and 6445 of the Education Law. One pertains to a Campus Advisory Safety Committee, which was just reinstituted this past September, from what I understand, as there was a positive vote from the Student Senate. That regulation has been in place since 2004. And the other regulation pertains to campus statistics, specifically regarding sexual misconduct, that are separate from the Campus Crime Statistics Report. It's called the Campus Climate Assessment. And I was wondering why RPI has been delinquent on both of these, one having been recently rectified, and if there is a plan in place to rectify the second one.
Curtis, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, well, congratulations that you got a job with the state. And let me share with you, first of all, if you work with the state, you know that they've just came out with the format to provide the report to them regarding the campus climate survey. And we've completed the survey, and we have the results of that survey, and we will be submitting that to the state within the next two weeks or so.
I was told by a member of the Human Resources team that that was supposed to happen before school started, that was around the weekend before classes began.
Is it the survey itself, or is it the assessment that's been done, and we're ready to publish that and give the results of that?
I'd love to see a copy when it's published.
Okay.
Actually, sometimes there are nominal dates for the submission of things, but before an institution can respond, there has to be definitive guidance. And I know that from the federal government, where I was a nuclear regulator. And so a regulatory or an oversight body can promulgate a requirement, but in fact, until there's definitive guidance, you know, one has to be careful in what one submits. And so as far as I know, you know, we're in compliance with what the requirements are. But thank you for the question. Are there others? Please.
Hi, Dr. Jackson. So my question does not actually come from a pre-prepared sheet. It was actually sent to me by my mother and some of her friends who are alumni. So I will, I will do my best to paraphrase and still get the point across. So she's actually been seeing RPI come up a little bit in the news. There's an organization called the FIRE, or if I remember correctly, it's the Foundation for Individual Rights in Education. They've called RPI out a couple times. They gave RPI a red light ranking in terms of speech code, and she has not been able to find a response that she was comfortable with, they're happy with. I looked, I haven't found any as well. I was just wondering if there's anything you would like to say regarding those articles that have come out and...
I'll let the General Counsel speak to that.
Thank you.
So if you, if you actually go to the FIRE website, you can see that there's a number of universities who, they rate universities on student-protected speech. They rated two of our policies as not being as protective as they'd like, the red light category. One of those policies was our sexual misconduct policy, which had things in it like prohibitions on harassing, intimidating, sexual innuendo, those sorts of things. Their view, if you look at it carefully, is that that's something that goes beyond protected, that that should be protected speech. There's a lot of universities that have those policies. A lot of universities are very proud of those policies. We, we readied our policy because we were required to do so by the federal government back in, I think, 2015. So we stand very firmly behind what we've done in that policy, and they can put a red light on it if they want to, but we're going to protect our students against sexual harassment, sexual misconduct. The other policy was a policy in cybersecurity that they pointed out as a red light. That policy similarly says you cannot use RPI assets to harass, to intimidate, to do those sorts of things. Similar answer. We, we feel very strongly that's the right thing to do for our students. Other universities have done the same thing. So I don't put a lot of faith in their quote ratings of those policies in terms of protected speech. We're a private university. We have a little more leeway than some of the public universities, but we do believe in free expression, but we do feel strongly about those policies.
Other questions? Yes, Michael?
If I may, for Steve, I think his mother is probably referring to more of the recent articles about the protests being denied in the past couple years, and that I understand that the Dean of Students' Office has their reasons for that, but the optics are bad. And I think his mother is also probably looking for a comment about that as well, as does my mother.
Well, I'll let Travis, as the Dean of Students', speak initially, but then I'll, I'll share perspective with you. Please.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. So whenever we have an application for peaceful demonstration, we review that very carefully in concerning with, in concert with what else is happening in those dates, in that timeframe, in that location. We want to make sure that safety is first and foremost of our concern. Can we actually staff that type of a demonstration with everything else that's going on? And so, you know, and then also in conjunction with, is it going to disrupt regular activities of the institution and so forth? And so when we looked at the most recent application, we had determined early on, weeks before, that we were going to be very hard-pressed to be able to do any other large event, including a demonstration. And so, denied that particular demonstration for the very specific time period, invited those folks in, the individual who actually applied for the demonstration, to have a conversation about alternatives, and, and that person refused to do that, denied doing that. I'll, I'll let you follow up in just one second. One of the things I would say is, when you look at other demonstrations in the Maine at Rensselaer over the past number of years, I think that we do a lot to try to allow our students to have that freedom of speech and be able to demonstrate. Many campuses actually have incredibly restricted policies in terms of where is appropriate, you know, freedom of speech locations that are not flexible. Even public universities who are required to grant freedom of speech as a constitutional right. So when you look at our policy and our practices overall, I would say that we're actually very flexible. I do understand, you know, the, some of the feedback that we received, but again, invited folks in to have a conversation about what alternatives may happen, and didn't have any opportunity to interact with those folks based on their choices. You had a follow-up?
So, Dean Apgar, I don't think we've been formally introduced. I was actually the person that submitted the application. So when I was followed up with by your secretary, she contacted me, and she said to me, "Mr. Johns, we have reviewed your schedule for today, and we see that you're free at these times. If you can, please call our office. Dean Apgar would like to meet with you." I told her that because there were to be no demonstrations at all that weekend, that I would no longer be pursuing my application, and she told me that you wished to meet with me regardless. I did not know why you still wanted to meet if I was not following up with the application. So I asked her, and she told me that you didn't tell her and that she didn't know. I stated to her that I would be happy to come in some other time, but I am busy today. I have some commitments. And she wished me a good weekend, and I never heard back.
Okay. Well, well, thanks. I appreciate that. That's, that's not the, that's not exactly what I had in terms of the response that you gave to her. Too bad we didn't connect, and that we, it's nice to finally meet you face-to-face. I did also, you know, kind of put it out there publicly that I'd be happy to meet with, with anybody who was interested. The only person that showed up was a recent alum, and actually did not even bring a proposal for an alternative. So, you know, hopefully in the future, what I would suggest is anybody who is interested, please do follow up. Come and talk to us. We'd love to see if we can, you know, our, our goal is to try to say yes to what students want to do, and figure out how to make that happen with them, not, not to say no, but, but once in a while, we do have to alter what that plan looks like.
And, and when that happens, it's because we, we also have a responsibility for the safety and security of, of all members of the Rensselaer community and, and visitors who also come here. And so, you know, the judgments get made within that frame. Are there other questions? Okay.
Sorry, I just have a lot of questions after being at RPI for so many years. Always be curious, right? So my question, again, is tying a bit back to the union. I know, we're not going to jump to conclusions about things, because I do want to recognize that the Senate, the Rensselaer Union, Student Senate, did recognize that you have ultimate authority for the hiring process. So that happened a while ago. My question is in reference to the wording of the Union Constitution, yes, with the approval vote, the fact that it's a, it's the student union's recognition that a candidate is acceptable to be in a position. So my question in relating to this is, when people have discussed this with you about how if the students say yes, and you'll probably say yes or no due to reasons that we have happened through the interview process, there have been concerns about if the students say no, and then you say yes, and to follow that, students asked, you said, of course, in response, "Well, I always believe in the students. I would never go in contrary."
No, I said I would take very seriously the student input.
Yes. But the, the question I am wondering about is, if you take it so seriously, what prevents you from saying not having in writing, you saying that, yes, I will have, I will agree with the students unless there is some sort of grave error of some sort on the student's side?
Well, because we are going to leave it to judgment of those who have the responsibility for hiring, and, and we are very proud of our student-run union, and, and we know our students are very bright. But the people who in the end have to make the judgment have had many years of experience in hiring employees, and, and we are going to have a consistent process in terms of how all employees are hired. And what we've talked about in that regard is consistent with that. And, and so, no, we're not going to memorialize it that way, because in the end, there could be reasons that things go awry. So you can have a situation where there's a discriminatory act, where there's something that happens. And so we can anticipate all the possible circumstances, and, and so we haven't memorialized it for other parts of the university, and, and so we don't think it's prudent to do it here.
I see. And I completely agree with making sure that, that there's no way that the hiring process is discriminatory. I feel odd to have that sort of remark be brought to those. since that would be an assumption that the entire student representation body agrees with this fact that they would be discriminatory against the individual. And I feel like we as smart and accepting individuals in our community here would not stoop to those low morals.
And so you wouldn't stoop to putting my head on the body of Kim Jong-il either, I assume?
I would never do that. I would never do that.
It happened on this campus. Other questions? I haven't heard much over here. Please.
Afternoon, Dr. Jackson. I've noticed in the Capitol campaign, a very... Excuse me. It's very focused on advancing society through technology, being one of the few philosophy majors here. Is there any efforts to expand the School of Haas to enhance society through the benefit or the betterment of people?
You know, it's interesting that you ask that question because nobody has put more money into Haas than the administration we have here, starting with the original Rensselaer plan, with hiring, with strengthening departments, with the revision of the curriculum, with the Haas inquiry courses, with creating ethics offerings and having bioethics folded into what we do in research. So there are any number of things that we've done to in fact strengthen Haas. And as I said, I've met with every department. And in fact, I met with all of the departments in Haas to talk about, you know, what their needs are and how we would strengthen them. So I'm surprised at the question. But, you know, I always say that the difficulty anybody has is... And the cabinet hears this all the time, that it's hard to walk into the fifth act of a 10-act play. You know, the play's not over, but there means there have been many acts before. And included in those acts are things that we've deliberately done to bring more centrality of Haas into Rensselaer and to strengthen it as we go. And even in the structuring of research groupings and what was called the KIP program, there's a very deliberate move to require that Haas, the Lally School Architecture, be included in those proposals. So thank you for the question. Okay. Gentlemen in the red shirt.
So many people I know and myself, and 5,363 members, specifically members of the RPI community and counting, have signed a petition staunch supportive of a soon-run union. For a university that can't even get that many Twitter followers or that many people to show up to reunion and homecoming in any given year, isn't that clearly indicating something the RPI community feels very strongly about supporting?
Well, that reaffirms our support for the union. And the fact that the union is very strongly part of Rensselaer. And I think if you look today and ask how the union runs versus how the union ran two years ago or five years ago, nothing has changed. And so the union has always been a part of Rensselaer. The director of the union has always been an employee of Rensselaer. And that employee gets hired pursuant to our hiring policies. You know, we expect the director of the union to be an advocate, a supporter, a coach, a mentor for the student union, working with the E-Board. But that person is also responsible for the smooth running of the union and the facilities that support the activities. And that person then is a Rensselaer employee. And a student group does not have the legal authority to hire an employee of the university. And so, you know, we go through the processes we've discussed. But, and we do these things because we are very supportive of the union. And so the union's not about to disappear. And it's not about to disappear as a student-run entity. And so we support the union. So that's all that I can really say. But thank you for bringing that up. And Richie might have some statements to you about Twitter's tweets or what have you. Please. Okay. Yes, please. I think this will be the last question.
I wanted to talk a little bit about class.
Sure.
All capital letters, class. I think it was a program created with good intent. You know, RPI students sometimes need a little help forming communities. However, I think lately it's being used in such a fashion, perhaps unintentionally, to dismantle organically formed communities. And the example I would go to here is learning and living communities like ARDA and Ground Zero. And I know that they were both moved from their longtime homes recently. And I think it's really a shame because organically formed communities are one of the most beautiful things at RPI, in my opinion.
Well, I'll let Travis speak to that. And if Norman wants to say anything.
So I'm glad you brought those two examples up, actually. I think we probably would say, and I'm going to look at our dean for student living and learning, Carrie Drescher, to also comment on this. We probably are giving those two organizations more support than maybe we have in the past. So one, we're looking at creating a space in a building, a newer building, where Ground Zero can call their home and hang their hat. ARDA actually is in Blitman, a much newer facility, more room, more space. We actually provided some help and assistance to actually move them there, help them re-categorize all of their anime and that sort of thing. And so I understand that there's maybe a perception of we've moved these folks, but yes, we have. But we've actually given them better spaces than they had previously. And we continue to support them.
If I asked members of those organizations, they would agree that it's better? Because what I understand is they've now moved to more outskirts locations on campus when they were centralized in Warren and Nugent, now Blitman, and I'm not sure.
Well, I think, let me say something, and then I'm going to call on Carrie. You know, at any time that there's a change and people are accustomed to being in a certain space, it's always difficult for people to contemplate moving. When we were building and opened the Biotech Center, there were people who didn't want to leave where they are. And I dare say that if we asked them today to leave Biotech, they would be quite upset. And so I think whenever there's a decision to do some kind of movement, people try to accommodate and in fact improve, you know, what happens for pre-existing activities. But, you know, the answer can't be that, you know, one space stays what it is, you know, forever and ever. There are academic spaces that move and change as well, you know, according to, you know, what makes the most sense at the time. But Carrie, let me let you speak to it.
Hi, everyone. So we were able to work this past summer with Auxiliary Services and Alex de Silva and Aaron Usman from the Office of Student Living and Learning with ARDA specifically to open up space for them at Blitman, which has a, as a former hotel, has a great conference area. So it gives them more space for showing their films and having meetings. We also were able to convert the old, I think cloakroom or jacket room down at Blitman into their library. And it's actually larger. It's much nicer. So we've actually only received positive comments from them. Regarding Ground Zero, as Travis mentioned, we're looking at newer space for them, but we're also have provided them with access to performance space that they've been extremely positive with. And I actually meet with ARDA, or sorry, Ground Zero, about twice a month to talk about how things are going and get feedback from them. So I think we've actually had a really positive interaction with both groups and worked really collaboratively to get them better space.
Yes, please.
You know, to your point, you know, as students come through and we have generations come through, they have different interests. And so while we still have students who are interested in some of these particular organizations and we support them, we also have students who are looking for other experiences like perhaps multicultural living and learning units and global citizenship units and wellness kinds of spaces. And so we're working pretty closely with students. We're going to work with the Student Life Committee on the Senate as well as our Residents' Hall Association, or excuse me, Residents' Student Association, and do some surveying, really determining what students would like to see in terms of those kinds of theme houses as well. So it's not to say that we don't support those groups that have been here, but we also want to make sure that we're paying attention to what students today and students tomorrow are looking for.
I'd actually like to respond to that. What I want to see is actually less of that and more of you letting students build their own space. Because that's what's beautiful to me about these communities. As students come together, they go, "Oh, I like arts. I like music." Or "I like anime and I like sci-fi." And they build a thing, and then through some miracle, they get it recognized, and it becomes a living space and a nice cultural thing at RPI, something that alumni can feel proud in and that is frankly extremely supportive to current students.
Yeah, Finney's very important. But let me be really clear about what I said. Students are telling us that this is what they're looking for. So we're supporting them in that search. So we're trying to do exactly what you're describing.
Okay. Oh, Claude, I'm sorry. Please.
You know, there's a great effort that goes on working with the student communities and the student clubs to provide space. And it's true, the students sometimes like to build their own space. But in the particular case of Ground Zero, what's not being discussed here is that Ground Zero was in the basement of Nugent. And the space that the students had built for themselves became a significant concern from a safety and security perspective. So one of the reasons and the primary driving reason why that space is vacated in the basement of Nugent is safety and security. And now we are working with Ground Zero. And I believe we're also facilitating with Ground Zero to help them become a club. Because that's extremely important. Because if a student wants to start building their own space, they really need to be associated with the clubs that are part of the union. All right? And so we've encouraged that as well. So I just want to make sure it's clearly understood why Ground Zero was moved and why we're making such a great investment to find alternative space. Because we really do support the intent and the program, but we want it to be in safe space.
So I think we're going to let you all take that offline because this is not meant to have a back and forth and back and forth on the one issue. Okay. Did I miss anybody? I can't really see. Okay. You get the true last question. Okay.
Good afternoon, Dr. Jackson. During reunion and homecoming weekend, a wall was erected around a large portion of academic campus. Students and alumni have stated that the administration's intent was to prevent student protesters from being visible to potential donors. The administration has claimed that it was an event barrier for fireworks safety. If this was in fact the case, would you please explain why S C E R had previously advertised the lawn adjacent to the V C C as the best viewing location and announced that student groups would line a transformative walkway to the event, both of which were changed? I would also like to add that classes within this fence and barrier had to be canceled after 2:00 PM on Friday because students could not get to class.
There are things that we do whenever there are major events and when things happen in a certain venue. And so this is no different than that. And to my knowledge, it was not a wall. And, but at any time we have certain special events, if we have commencement, things that might otherwise go on in the East Campus Athletic Village will not go on. And so this is no different than that. And we talk to people and work out the best strategies for what should happen. And so the launch of a campaign that's meant to support you to build our faculty and to further improve our campus is a big deal. And so this was treated in an analogous way as any other event that is a really big deal. Well, thank all of you. Thank you for your questions.